Thank you. I call to order the town council regular session. The time is 7:45 and it is Monday, July 22. If you could please all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dale, could we please have the roll call?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Donnelly.
Present.
Councilwoman Haley.
Present.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you Dale. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of June 20th and July 8th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have the regular session of July 8th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to licenses. License A, we have a resolution granting a victral license to Jero's Hometown Grill, limited liability corporation, 501 High Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the fire chief and the Rhode Island Department of Health. The application is by Joseph Patrick Brown, managing member, 20 Fern Leaf Trail, Narragansett. And is... Is it Patrick?
Yes, it is. Good evening.
Welcome.
How you doing?
Very good. If you could just tell us a little bit about the endeavor.
Well, it's...I've been away to Florida for the past 20 years and Jero's came available and it's time to come home. That's where the name came from, Jero's Hometown Grill. As you know me from 108 House Restaurant, I've got a lot of years of experience, both in South County as well as South Florida. So, I'm gonna be doing a predominantly food service business, you know, serving alcohol as well, but 70/30 is what I'm looking for. I'm looking to get back to the community, basically.
Okay. Do we have questions here for Patrick?
Patrick, what kind of food are you gonna serve?
Uh, we're gonna be doing soups, salads, sandwiches, dinners, fresh seafood. I do all my home cooking and my wife's recipes, a few things, and just a combination of all the restaurants I've worked in.
Mm-hmm. Uh, did you...do you remember Jero's when it was in Operation the Spaghetti House?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
We got a little bit of that in there, too.
Good.
It's totally changed, though, interior-wise.
Right.
But, I'm looking forward to it.
Are you gonna make any changes to the interior or are you like...
They were already done prior to my taking over, exactly.
So, it's gonna be like it was when it opened for like three days?
Three days, exactly, exactly. But, we've cleaned it up and it's gonna be a beautiful little place, so we look forward to seeing everybody there.
And when do you plan on opening?
As soon as possible.
Great.
Yesterday, actually.
Oh, yesterday.
No. We have a few more days to go and then we'll be open probably the end of this week or the beginning of next week.
Oh, very good.
Thank you.
Other questions here at the table?
I move approval of new license A.
Second.
Motion and second, and we did get a copy of the menu at, I think it was a couple weeks ago in our packet and it looks very interesting.
Yeah, there's a few more changes since you got that copy, too.
Good luck. I think it looks great.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Be very good.
Thank you.
All right. We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Does he have to stick around for the public hearing?
Yep.
Yeah.
Next, I'm going to open the public hearing. This is relative to an application for a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956, as amended as follow. It's a Class B Victral Liquor License, application for a Class B Victral License, Liquor License by Jero's Hometown Grill, limited liability corporation, doing business as Jero's Hometown Grill, 501 High Street, Wakefield, by Joseph Patrick Brown, managing member for the first floor bar area and dining area, and is fully defined in site plan, on file in the town clerk's office. Said license is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, Rhode Island Department of Health approval, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, and the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees in arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. So, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve. Do you have anything? Public hearing is open.
No, I think it would be in order for the applicant to come forward and to provide same information he's provided you today, for the commentary to be entered into the public hearing that he entered under the license A.
Any further information, Patrick?
Certificate of good standing, that's all in. Health department is coming in tomorrow afternoon, 2 o'clock, and everything's all set.
Okay. Any further questions here in the town council?
What approximately gonna be hours of operation?
Uh, we're shooting for 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Sunday. We're gonna be doing Sunday brunch from 9:00 to 1:00 and then regular service after that.
Wow. How many people can you seat in the restaurant?
Fifty-six was given to me by the fire marshal on Friday.
Things are moving along.
Moving along.
Wow.
Any other questions here at the town council before I open it to the public?
Ella, just...could you just have a vote to incorporate into this public hearing on all the statements that were made by the applicant under lic...under license 6A for the victral license?
Sylvia, can somebody?
Yep.
Okay. Do we need a formal motion? Could somebody make that motion?
Yeah, but we haven't closed the...
No.
Just to include all of the...
I want on the record that you're including all the testimony.
All statements included.
Okay, I make a motion that this public hearing incorporate all statements made by Joseph Patrick Brown regarding Jero's Hometown Grill from license A into the public hearing 7A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My second.
Motion and second, ready to vote. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's all included. Any other questions here at the table before I open it to the public? Okay, at this time, the microphone is open for the public hearing for any comments.
For anything on this?
Not for anything, just on this public hearing. Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I would like to move to new business 13A. New business 13A is a resolution affirming or amending the town's liquor license rules and regulations, section 1. The current number of licenses for each class shall be authorized as indicated below unless changed by a majority vote of the town council, and they are all listed.
I move that we increase Class B Victral License from 25 to 26.
Second that.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now, we can go back to... Public hearing 7A. Can we have a motion, please?
I move approval of public hearing 7A and its application for Class B Victral License by Jero's Hometown Grill.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. So, best of luck. Thank you.
It'll be great to see you open again. Very nice.
Good luck.
Okay. Which brings us to communication, item B. This is a communication dated July 10th from Andre Rakamaka, president, board of trustees, South Kingstown Public Library, urging the council to appoint a member to fill a vacancy on the board as received, placed on file in the town council, further directs. Do you want me to speak on it? We talked about this and I think that I've been given permission to appoint...to draft a letter in reference to this letter that rece...received by Andre. So, can I have a motion to that effect?
Can I say something, too?
Yes, please, Carol.
Oh, I'd also like to say that we have spent many hours on different applicants for these...for this position and everybody's highly qualified. We will make an appointment tonight, but I...I'm disturbed by the tone of this letter and other emails that we've received and I just wanted to make that clear. We appreciate everyone on our boards, but sometimes it's a difficult decision picking between very qualified residents and applicants for these positions. And we only have one position, so I think we've spent a lot of time and energy and due diligence on this.
In reference to some of the things that I'd like to include in the letter is my conversation with Andre Rakamaka the day before that this library board and some of the things that I had reiterated during those conversations was that this town council was...would have liked both candidates, they were both well-qualified, and we...one meeting, we sent Mike Arcillo, our town solicitor, out seeking information to how many people we could have on our library board. So, when that came back, there was another meeting that we could have voted, but with respect to all of our town council members, we had one absent, and when it's a new position, we always wait until we have all five members present. There was also other conversations that I made to two agencies in reference to state library services to see if there was any other way. They suggested maybe a committee be formed and one person, candidate, could be on the committee and the other one could serve on the board. So, there were many, many things that this town council went over and above trying to really do the right thing, and we really wanted both candidates, and unfortunately, there was only one. We also checked into...I stopped by Dale's office one day and looking for attendance at the meetings, if there was somebody who, you know, possibly couldn't attend as many meetings, and, you know, I think we went over and above, and I think that's our job here as elected officials, and I think that we did a good job. So, I think that this letter was really not warranted and it will be addressed. So, with that said, we have a motion?
I move that as to communication B, Ella Whaley will draft a letter which will be forwarded to all of us to...to the chairman of the Board of Trustees of the South Kingstown Public Library. Second.
I second it.
We have a second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to vote aye.
Okay. Sorry, Jim. I'm sorry. So, we have all in favor, four, and one opposed, and no abstentions, so four, one, zero. Thank you. Communication C, this is a communication dated July 11th, 2013, from Brendan and Laura Murphy requesting a certificate of recognition for their son, Colin Graham Murphy, who has attained the rank of Eagle Scout, is received, placed on file in the town council, further directs.
We discussed this at the work session. I believe the ceremony is August 11th, 2013. Dale is gonna prepare a certificate of recognition from the town council and I believe ask if they require attendance or how they wanna receive this. So, that's my motion. So, Dale, it's all up to you, dear.
Second that motion.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. And before we even open it to the public, I would just like to comment on a consent agenda and if Steve Alfred wanted to follow up with comments. The AED defibrillator that was received or will be received in South Kingstown due to a lifespan AED grant program is very much appreciated. It will be at Old Mountain Field and it is to reinforce our HeartSafe Community Initiative with our AEDs around the town. And we can't thank enough, you know, Lifespan as well as South County Hospital that is going to give us the case that will be in it at Old Mountain Field as well as Mike DeMello in charge of our Director of Emergency Medical Services. So, at this time, I just want to extend a grateful, heartfelt thanks.
I think one point I would like to also make here is that this is probably one of the first in the country, according to our information, that will be self-housed. We're...we're not gonna have a requirement that a building be open with people's...who are well-versed in the use of the equipment. This will be in a...in a secured lock box. If there's a need for the...or call for service, it would be the normal 911 call. The 911 call would be referred to the South Kingstown Police Department Dispatch. Dispatch would provide the caller with a code to be entered into the service box that would release the box and provide direct access to the AED. At the same time, the police department would dispatch the paramedics to the site, but in the interim, until that vehicle arrives, the Good Samaritan would have the ability with the use of that equipment to be able to start resuscitation. Both Lifespan and South County Hospital both see that the necessity is to get to the patient as quickly as possible to start the resuscitation. South Kingstown has been a...a community that's met the terms and conditions associated with the HeartSafe Community. We're hoping that this will be an example to other communities to get certification. Our certification includes the police department having AEDs within each of the police vehicles, responding on emergency calls, and being trained in the use of that equipment, as well as the use of a paramedic workforce within the EMS department using the 12-leaf electrocardiogram. So, I think we're proud of the program. I'm also certainly thankful to the two agencies for their support and also to our director for placing the applications before each of the agencies and receiving their approval. Hopefully, it's there and won't be used, but if it's necessary, it hopefully can save lives.
Thank you, Steve. At this time, I'm gonna open the microphone to any comments from interested citizens. So, please come forward and state your name.
Hello, my name is Joel Tuoni. I've been a resident in South Kingstown since 1972. Grew up playing sports through the town, played in the middle school, played at the high school, and I also coached high school sports. I've been at South Kingstown. This is my second stint. This is my 12th year over at the high school where I coached the girls' basketball and softball team. I also was at the basketball coach in the early 90s, so I've got some time invested in this town. I'd like to talk today about the contract that the town has with the South County Umpires Association. They are...they were given...they are a group of umpires, okay, and they've been doing work for the town of South Kingstown as far as providing services. Now, it has been...my...some of my problems with this group are that for 15 years, this has been an unsolicited bid that has gone out to this group of people, okay? According to Terry Murphy, the employee identification number that the town is paying this group, SCUA, South County Umpires Association, abbreviation is SCUA, according to the number that I received from Terry Murphy, this number is nowhere valid in the state's data bank. Okay? I...now, with this, I have some handouts that I'd like to hand out, which I'd like to walk some...a couple of the problems and issues that I have with that. So, if I may?
If you could give them to Dale and she will get them to us, Joel. Thank you.
Oh, I'll wait till you guys grab them, if you would, so we can all kinda be on the same page. The town has been paying the group as a nonprofit organization. They have applied for...with this number as a nonprofit organization. So, with that go some questions that I have about what is going on. The first one being, for four years, I've tried to get information from this group about public records. The first one being, it says on the first page that the exempt organization must provide a copy of covered tax documents to an individual who makes a written or in-person request at the organization's principal office. I've been doing this for four years and been ignored. So, I went to the guild and asked Kathy Larlam, since she has a contract with this group, if she could help me in obtaining these public records, at which point I was told it was going to be passed on and they'll get back to me. I then came to Mr. Alfred to ask him about it. His response to me initially, when I asked him to read the first sentence, was, "I don't know what a covered tax document is. This is redundant. This is taking up too much time. You need to go get a lawyer." Okay?
That's what happened when you requested a...
Public rec...correct. That's what happened when I requested for some help in obtaining this public information. I was told that I need to go to obtain a lawyer.
I'm sorry, can I...Steve, did you wanna comment?
Comment that I've made to Mr. Tuoni is that the town has a contract with a...with a company. Whether it's for-profit or not-for-profit has nothing to do with the town of South Kingstown. If, in fact, he has business with that organization, it's his responsibility to work through the organization, not through somebody who's buying services from that organization. We have 420 approximate games that are run with the five different leagues that we operate with the recreation department. Since 1999, all of the umpiring has been done through this association. If there are claims that the agency is not meeting the requirements of IRS, it's not the town of South Kingstown's place. We're paying for specific services that are outlined in a contract. If, in fact, they are not complying with federal IRS regulations, then that is something that needs to be dealt with through IRS, not through the town of South Kingstown acting as a facilitator for a private party to obtain records through a nonprofit or a for-profit corporation. That's the position that I've taken. I have not suggested that he's taking too much time. I think that's a bit of an ad lib. What I've said to him is, "The town is not going to become involved in his personal issues dealing with this organization. We simply buy services through that organization." And I will say again, if, in fact, he wishes to get information, he may need to contact a lawyer to be able to determine what his rights are. But, that's not the town of South Kingstown's responsibility to fill that void.
Can I...may I add?
I'm gonna go back to Joel.
I'm sorry, back to me, yes?
Yes.
The employee identification number that the town of South Kingstown is paying this group on is not a valid number. If you look on the second last page, the colored page of the pamphlet that I handed out, it says on it, "The employee identification..." We punch it into the state database, and if you see what it says in front of you, "No filings match your selection." Then, when you look down below, when we search for South County Umpires Association, "No records match your thing." They have not registered to do business in the state, and yet, we continue to give them an unsolicited bid contract that's been going on, and this contract isn't cheap. It's 30,000...approximately $30,000 a year, we're talking. Okay? So, there is no...there...if I'm not mistaken, there needs to be a link from...the number that they turned in and submitted was from the Charahoe Athletic Association. What happened was, these people branched out from the Charahoe Athletic Association, took their employee identification number, gave it to the town, and said, "This is our number." It's not a valid number, okay? Now, if you look on the last page that I handed you guys on the handout, if we...if we count up from the bottom, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 places up, the Charahoe Athletic Association, now, this is what SCUA operates under supposedly, yet there is no link, got a revocation notice for failure to file its annual report. The next lineup says they got the certificate. So, for 10 years, from 2000 to 2010, the Charahoe Athletic Association's right to do business in the state was suspended. In 2010, it got reinstated. So, there's a 10-year gap there where that group is not legally to be...legal to be operating in the state, and we have continued to give these people an unsolicited bid contract. This continues to go on.
Could I ask a question?
Just remember, it is not an item on the agenda, so if we want to go back and forth with the dialogue, we have to make a motion to put it on the agenda. Or, the second option that we have is we can just ask you questions, you won't get answers to them, and we can ask that it be placed on the next agenda. What's your preference?
I may not necessarily need to have an answer, but I think this is something we should think about. I appreciate the fact that you came here and you voiced some concerns, and those are big concerns. Two questions that I have is, if all of these umpires are working at games, maybe this could be put on the next agenda, on their paychecks, what is the tax ID number listed? And also, on the W2s that come at the end of the year, how is that being reported? So, that would be something that I...if this goes to the next agenda, those are two questions I would like to have answered.
So, I can't address that now?
Unless we vote to have it on the agenda.
Why don't you just vote, because I have to make some comments.
I move to place this item on the agenda presented by Joel...what's your last name, Joel?
Tuoni.
Tuoni?
Yes.
How do you spell that?
T-U-O-N-I.
T-U-O-N-I. Regarding the South County Umpires.
I'll second that.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's now, and item on the agenda.
Great. I...first of all, I just wanted to say that Steve, of course, had me look into this also, and I rendered a legal opinion to Terry, basically agreeing with everything that Steve had said. There's obviously something going on. The town enters into thousands of contracts with organizations, profit, nonprofit, unincorporated associations, et cetera. So, it's not the town's burden to be following up on the tax status of all of these corporations. The...and those who are lawyers understand the fact that a charter has been revoked by the Secretary of State. Doesn't mean they don't do business, it just means they're an unincorporated association, and God knows there are thousands of unincorporated associations. The town basically pays, as I understand, the umpire association a check. What they do with the money thereafter is between that organization and the employees. We, as a town, have no idea how they're paid, whether 1099s are given out, whether they're complying with tax laws. We don't know if the people who are receiving the checks are adding that to their income for their own federal tax returns. You gotta understand, we're getting into very private stuff that's none of our business. That is...we don't get into people's tax returns, so...
Thank you.
So, the question that Councilwoman Haley just asked for.
I don't think we can provide that, Meg.
That's okay.
I could answer that. I could answer that, being somebody that got that. When I asked years ago, "How can this be possible that we're making tax-free money?", the response that I got from the secretary treasurer was, "I get rid of all the checks at the end of the year, and since we're a nonprofit organization, if there's no account, no money left in the account out at the end of the year, they'll never come looking for us." Okay? That was the response that I got when I inquired years ago about, "How can this be possible?"
But, again, that has nothing to do with the town of South King...we're...for instance, I'll just give you, for instance, you know, you approve contracts every time you meet. So, the town pays the contractor the stipulated sum. That contractor then has to go out and pay his or her subs or employees. We don't look into how that's...nor should we, nor do we have any right to. All we have a right to do is to be sure that they're complying with the terms of our contract. What happens to the money that we pay them is not our business, nor should it be our business. That's the trouble we're having here.
But, the trouble is, we're paying on an account that's not valid. Did anybody do any research? Did anybody check this employee identification? I mean, none of that matters? I can...I don't understand how that can work, that we can just say, "Well, we have an account with them," and whether they're legal or not, I don't understand that. If they're not a legally operating group and they're not following the laws, I don't understand how we can continue to give this group an unsolicited bid for a lot of money.
Carol?
Joel, have you contacted the IRS about this?
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
And you've alerted them to the fact that you can't get the documents that you're asking for?
That's correct.
Have you also alerted them to the fact that this is- the employee ID is not correct?
Yes, but what has-
What did they say to you?
Basically, they said to me that I need to follow through with legal end of it, and to take a look at it through that way, that I need to obtain a lawyer, and then they will pursue it that way. That there are public documents, public records, that should be released, because they're public. And if I'm having a problem getting that, then I have to obtain a lawyer and go after it that way. There's a form that you can file for a public record through the IRS.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But even more than IRS, this is also state.
Were you ever in this organization?
Yes.
You were. How long ago?
I was in- I've started out umpiring for the Town of South Kingstown before this group was even involved. We used to get paid right out of the Guild. The Guild used to handle all of the umpires. Then-
Get it as- by a 1099? Is that how you got paid?
Well, yes. We were on the books, everything was on the- no, no, we were on the books for taxes then, and it was- the taxes were taken out, we got paid every two weeks, and that's how it was done. Then this group comes in with this number, and I'll admit, I was a part of- I was a part of the group.
Mm-hmm.
And they came in with this number, and all of a sudden, now, we're just getting paid straight money. No taxes taken out, nothing.
So you're still in the group now?
Well, I was suspended for asking for the records. Without a hearing, they suspended me, without even allowing me to be present.
So, when you were getting paid straight money, cash?
Check, it was.
Whatever. Were you 1099?
We did not do that due to the fact that we were supposed to receive one from them, and we were told, "Don't worry about it."
Well, that's their problem.
I agree, and that's what's been going on. So what has happened since is, this group has decided, well, since I complained and brought it to their attention, they've gone out and applied for a 501(c)(3). And then they went around telling all the umpires, "Because of this, you're all going to have to start paying taxes." So they put the shift on me, but all of a sudden, why did they all of a sudden change to a 501(c)(3) if everything was legal and legitimate?
Because you blew the whistle.
Well, because it wasn't legitimate, is my belief.
Or it could have been the fact that it was an association and not a 501(c)(3), or a 501- a different designation, that sometimes happens. Because I know when I was a Girl Scout troop leader, we were not a 501(c)(3), we had different designations. So it could be that, too. I'm not saying you're wrong, believe you me, I'm not at all. But I just don't know. I don't know enough about it.
It's quite the ironic coincidence, if that was the case then, but perhaps, correct.
So, Mike, I just want to ask you a question. Now that we've been alerted to this, are there any steps we should take to correct this in any way?
Well, my guess is, the association's going to be in touch with us now-
Mm-hmm.
-after we're hearing about all this, but-
But even if they're not, I think that maybe we should pursue a discussion with them.
We don't have a right to look into their tax status. If they're not a 501(c)(3), and if they're not an incorporated group, and if they're not recognized by the Secretary of State as a for-profit organization, then we treat them as an unincorporated association, which is fine.
Yeah, that doesn't bother me. It's the ID number that bothers me more than that. I mean, the ID number comes up that there is no person or a thing that's attached to it, the tax ID number.
Yeah, I'm going to defer. I don't know what we require of all of- I assume every vendor we require an ID number from, in order for us to process a check.
I think what we will do at the termination of this contract, the end of the recreation season, is we'll put a spec together, which hasn't been used since 1999. That would require specific performance on a number of these issues. So that by the time we get into the next season, we will be able to address those in terms of making sure that the town is meeting all of its duties and responsibilities. But there's no way I can terminate the contract that's in place at this point. And also, because when we looked at it, whether the EIS that they're using is appropriate or not, is an issue for that organization to deal with. They are fully aware of the complaints that this gentleman has made, and I believe we'll be addressing those to ensure that they're in full compliance. Now, if they were not holding taxes or paying taxes, and people were not filing 1099s at the end of the year in previous years, the IRS has every right to go back after those individuals, and possibly will. But, again, the Town of South Kingstown purchased services through an organization. Once that contract expires, we certainly will make sure that we've got all of the controls in place before we award a contract for the following year. But there's not an awful lot of people out there, that organizations, that provide this type of service.
Mm-hmm.
And again, for the most part, it's all local residents that are members of the association that do umpiring, and many of them have done umpiring for many years, just as this gentleman has. What his difficulties are with the organization, I don't know, and I don't want to be involved in. But when we look at next year's contract, we'll look at scoping that service, so that if there are questions that we need to be able to answer directly, we will. But I'm not going to terminate a contract midstream, in the middle of the recreation season, with 420 games going. That's not fair to the participants.
No.
And if, in fact, things are appropriately done by that organization, it's not fair to that organization either.
Steve, can you tell me when, and maybe you don't have this information at your fingertips, when the contract ends?
Well, the contract would end with this recreation season. So there's five leagues that we have. Once those five leagues close, I mean, there's going to be playoff games, there's that type of thing, but it's approximately 420 games. We pay the- anywhere between $26 and $34 per umpire, per game. There's usually two umpires with each of the games. There is a good deal of money that's paid out through that contract. But again, we're buying a service. We're assuming that the service is going to meet their due diligence and responsibilities as a vendor. If not, they could be possibly fined. But it's interesting that the advice that I gave this gentleman, which was, he would have to get legal services, is the same that IRS is providing. So, I mean, it's not something the town can provide on his behalf.
So are we saying, you know, do we have a month when this contract ends? Is it December 31st? Is it-
It'll end probably by September.
We're in the fall ball season, so it'll be more likely the end of October.
End of October.
I have a little bit of a question and issue here with, do we- before we give somebody a contract, don't we validate that they're legitimate? I mean, you're saying, "Well, it's not our concern, we don't check into it, we don't know." So we, all of a sudden, just give people without checking the contract? I mean, this has been a no-bid contract.
Joel, one of the things I think you're missing here, just because some- an organization isn't registered with the Secretary of State, I mean, it could be through an individual, it doesn't have to be an incorporation or an LLC. I mean, so, I mean, I can see what Mike is saying and Steve. I mean, it's not the obligation to check out that the organization has definitely filed all their annual reports and all of that. I mean, a lot of people continue to do business as individuals and never incorporate.
Sure. But do we verify the number that we're paying them on? That it's a legitimate number? I mean, because what would stop me from taking that same number and doing the same thing?
In reference to the $30,000 that the town pays?
IRS should stop you.
Well, yeah, but-
That would be IRS fraud. It's plain and certain.
Yeah.
IRS fraud.
Which is exactly what they committed by doing this.
Wow.
Right, right. Okay, well, the other thing that I'll add to say is, because of what's transpired for me, I've gone on to another group where I umpire, out of Newport, and they do Narragansett, okay? I'm not going to play games with them, as far as this goes, I'm still going to go on, as far as this goes. But I will say this, over in Newport, okay, the Town of South Kingstown, right now, is paying $62 a game. Okay? Two umpires get $29 apiece, each of the two assigners get $2 a game. So that's $62. Over in Newport, we get $25 a game, the assigner gets $2 a game. So there's $54. So you're talking $8 a game at 420 games approximately? You're talking $3,500, $3,600 a season there? And the fact that this continued- has continued to go out unsolicited like that, is costing the town a lot of money. The people are complaining about their entry fees, how much it costs, things like that. So there are other avenues out there. It's not just these guys. I mean, I understand, now you're telling me you're going to go and put it out to bid next year, but for 15 years, a contract of $30,000 doesn't go out to bid? It's a bit of a problem, I think.
Is there a certain dollar amount that it has to go to bid, Steve?
Anything over $10,000 would be a bid item if it wasn't looked at as being a specialized service. This was looked at as a specialized service, because it's kind of difficult to bring umpires in from other areas to be able to do local games, particularly with a number of games that we're talking about. Again, I can look at all of that for the next season. All I can say is that there's been a renewal of a contract that goes back to 1999. If we're going to pull out a pot, we can say, "Yeah, we could bid this and possibly bring in a company from some other area." I'm not sure that's in the best interest of the leagues that we have, but we certainly could look at that. But again, I think what we've looked at is, this is a specialized service, rather than one that's going out to bid.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, Steve, notwithstanding tonight's conversation, the services over the years, I've never heard any complaints, but I think they've been more than satisfactory.
I'm not sure anybody's ever satisfied with what the umpires say, but I think that as a service, we haven't had problems with the service. And again, I think it's one of those things where we looked at it, where we were not going to go with the 1099s anymore, we were able to contract with a private service that was going to be able to deal with a multitude of different people, and that service has just been repeated since 1999. Do we need to change that? We can take a look at it, but we're not changing it during the season.
The cost per game, I'm sure, has been different since 1999. I'm sure it's not the same, whatever the dollar amount was.
No, I think, well, certainly the dollar amount's changed, also the number of leagues has probably increased as well.
So Joel, how do we get you back in the South County Umpires?
That's a good question. I was suspended from the group without a hearing. I got a notice in the mail saying that I'm no longer part of the group.
Who's in charge of that organization?
There are two people. There's Robert Riccatelli and Charles Beck.
Are they local?
Charles Beck is a Charleston resident, and Mr. Riccatelli just moved into South Kingstown three years ago. So, I mean, my feeling, though, where I'm- I guess where I have to leave this at, and where I'm having a hard time with, is, I don't know that anybody ever checked in to make sure. Now, you're saying, I'm hearing that it's not the town's responsibility to make sure they're legitimate? That's what I'm hearing?
They could be legitimate, but they don't have to be incorporated. They could be- it's like you hire someone to paint your house, you pay them $10,000. Now, they're supposed to file a 1099 to pay the tax on that. It's not up to me to see that they pay their taxes. It's up to the individual. They may not be incorporated, they may not have, you know, a federal ID number, you know, they got a truck with a paintbrush.
Right.
This is kind of like what these guys are. And then what they're doing is, they're just not paying- they're not paying the taxes.
That's the allegation. We're in a public hearing. That's the allegation.
We don't know that.
That's the allegation.
Correct.
That's the scenario.
But you're right on track with that, though. Because when I asked to see the records, which are supposed to be for three years' tax document, I know you guys say I have to go through the IRS, but it's public record. And when I asked to see that, I was thrown out of the group for asking to see what public records are. And if I'm not mistaken, I looked on the town's webpage, and then there's something about public records, it says to come here, if you're being denied access to public records.
Those, of course, are town public records, not records from a private organization. That's the difference.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. But I think maybe now that the- you'll get a little newspaper coverage here, maybe you'll get some action from these guys. I mean, I'd like to see the records at this point.
Yeah, well, good luck with that. We don't- there's a lot of us in the group that would like to. But what has happened was, they decided, since I spoke up, I was made the example of the group. So everybody else just shut, just was quiet when we had a meeting. One of the men got up in front of us and told us that he was the king of the group. And since I don't like it, I was, my derriere is out of the group, was how it went down. So when a grown man stands up in front of me and tells me he's my king, I have a little bit of a problem.
Oh, I hear you.
But that's not what this is about. That's a separate issue.
Mm-hmm.
So, at the end of the contract, we're going to revisit this, and you can put it on, an item on the agenda, too?
That's correct.
How we're going to move forward?
We will review it.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from interested citizens? Mr. Traeger, welcome. Is it hot enough for you?
Bob Traeger, how are you? I wasn't going to- I just came tonight, tried to get over here, you know, half asleep. But as I- I'll just mention again, you know, it's worth coming to these meetings, because then you look at all the boring stuff on this, and then all of a sudden, something comes up. And believe me, what came up is a national issue, as far as I'm concerned. And I think you're hearing it all the time. They call them whistleblowers now, I guess, people that find out things that the government's doing, or they- or you might be doing, or you might be doing. And they think they're wrong, and then they can get in a lot of trouble for doing what this gentleman has done, you know? I mean, if nobody takes- and if nobody takes the issue seriously, at least to some extent, then the person that brings it up, oh, and tends to look like the fool. But I think we need a lot more fools in this country right now. I really do think we need a lot more. And I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm listening to this dialogue, and you tried to address it a number of times, you know, "Well, shouldn't you check that?" Well, I understand these legal statements, "Well, it's none of our business, and it's none of this, and it's none of that." Well, maybe most of the time, that's true. But if somebody brings something to your attention, and you're a public official, I think you do have, and you're doing it, you put it on the agenda. It should be looked into and straightened out, if it can be. And this is what I think it's all about. That's why I said many times, I'm not the greatest speaker, but I think people in the town should show up to these meetings once in a while, once a year, anyway, you know? And now when they're televised, you know how I feel about that. I don't care whether you put it on the next day or not, I think it should be live. But this is one of the reasons I think it should be live. This is a very good example of it, a very good example. He should have what he said out immediately to the public, and let them react to it. Let them react to it. I would say something else, this is just- I'm going to- what I've done now, I've spoken, I don't know how many minutes, but if we were in Narragansett, they have a clock on the wall. And they look, and they don't always cut your throat, but they will, you know, because a lot of people do go there every week, and they do get up, and they do question what the town is doing, the decisions the towns are making. Are they right all the time? Are they listened to? I don't know. Some of them, I know are right. When somebody gets up and say, "We should plan ahead. We should have a 10-year plan." I don't know, you probably do that here in South Kingstown. Some places don't. You know, they go from day to day, and whatever happened two years ago, they forget about it, and then they have to do it all over again. Anyway, this was a- I'm glad I came tonight, because I heard what I believe it's all about.
Thank you, Bobby. May want to check into that, whistleblowers protection there, Joel.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments here from interested citizens? I didn't know if the Perrys wanted to comment with anything. This would be great.
John and Geraldine Perry from Biscuit City Road. We were here about a month ago about an issue- We were here about a month ago about an issue we have in our neighborhood about rooster noise, noise from roosters. We saw that Mr. Osillo has produced a document which has a list of potential remedies to this situation. We have some neighbors here, the cats are here, and we maybe look a little tired. Most of us in Biscuit City have been up since four o'clock this morning because of the roosters, so it's a little late for us. But I'd like to maybe hear what you have to say, and want to know what the process is after this.
Once again, I'd ask you to add to the agenda discussion of the proposed rooster ordinance.
I move we add the proposed rooster ordinance procedure to the agenda.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's now added to the agenda.
So as you're aware, on July 9th, following the last council meeting, I sent you five potential proposals with regard to the adoption of an ordinance that addresses the issues that were raised involving roosters. It's, the procedure is it's up to the council to decide whether or not you want to pursue adopting such an ordinance. I suggested to you that the best way to do this is to begin with a public informational hearing, because what I gathered from the meeting that I was at, there are apparently lots of different opinions about this issue. An informational hearing would allow you as a council to hear from all sides of view. I also suggest that as part of that public informational hearing, that you would provide notice to the farmers throughout the town pursuant to the Farmers Notification Act. If, in fact, you decide to go that route, depending on how that informational hearing goes, you would then direct me a solicitor to pursue or not to pursue one of the options in terms of possible codification of any of these options. So that's basically the process that would be followed.
Mike, could you go over the five different options, maybe?
Before we do that, though, could I ask a question? I know that, I just sense that your abundance of caution with the farmers and public hearing concerns, this is an ongoing thing we've been addressing for seven years. And, you know, at what point, at what point, really, will there be action? Or is, I mean, are we going to get to some action, or are we going to continue to discuss? I just, I don't even know if I could ask for a straw poll. I don't know where anybody stands on this. I mean, if we should just go home, it would be good to know. I'm curious.
So obviously, that's up to you to decide where you want to go with this. I've given you options.
I know that at the last time we had your presence at the town council, I made the statement that, you know, I really would like everybody happy in the town and peace and quiet of your own home, and hoping that this could have gotten worked out with your neighbor. So at this point, me personally, I would like it to be moved forward to the public informational, you know, meeting, get the farmers here, and I'm hoping that the farmers would step up to the plate and help us make some recommendations. I think in houses that are closely situated together, you know, maybe there can be some reprieve. I know me personally, I sit on my deck frequently to get away from my family, so I'm not distracted, to just sit and read my town council packet. And if I had a rooster crowing, nothing against roosters, but I know that I would find it very difficult to focus and get my work done. I probably would then have to find another location beyond my home, such as the library or whatever. But I would, I would hope that I would be able to enjoy my deck at my house. So if that is what Mike is saying, there's, you know, if the way to go about it, Mike is a public meeting or notice to the farmers, I mean, I personally am ready to move forward. But I want to hear from the other town council members.
Because we also heard at the last meeting that the planning board has grappled with this, and now it's in your hands, you're the public officials, so you need input because it's not going to be an easy issue to deal with, given the various points of view you're going to hear. But then again, that's probably true about all the decisions you make.
But I think it would make it easier to have an educated guess if we had a public hearing on this. I personally have an abiding neighbor who has roosters, and so I understand your plight because I can't stand it. However, I'm not ready to make a decision to say that we have to ban roosters Sure. from the town, because I respect people's rights to, as I do yours. I absolutely can relate to what you're saying, because I hear it every morning myself. But I think we need to be more educated. I asked a question at the last meeting. We don't know how many people have roosters. I have no clue in this town. I guess I need more information to move forward with this. I agree with that, well.
Carol?
Mike, or Steve, did we get any materials from the planning board regarding this, or did they just not entertain it?
I think they provided a memorandum indicating that they did not feel that it should be addressed through zoning.
And they had public hearings on this, right?
They had an informational hearing, I believe, a work session where there were different interests that...
Do you know when that was?
Yes, we do. We have the memo that was generated and given to us by the planning board. They actually...
They recommended it be handled through a noise ordinance, I guess. My interpretation of this particular memo...
And that was in 2011, October 2011.
I can give you a copy, Dale, if you want.
I can get a copy. I just want to look at it.
The fact is, if I may, and I'm not trying to be one of those...
Could I just interrupt for one second, Gerald? Was that letter from the planning board addressed to you, and was it CC to the town council?
It was to Steve Alfred from Mr. Murray, not CC to the council. And so, no, not addressed to us personally. It's to the town manager.
Steve, if there was a record to the town council, because...
The council received a letter on October 3rd of 2011 from Maria Mack, reference to potential regulatory amendments regarding keeping of domestic fowl on residential properties.
I see that here, too.
That's the last one that the council received, and it indicated that they were not recommending changes, changes to the ordinance. I can certainly provide additional copies of that to the council.
Now, this is a different issue now. We're talking about a noise, some remedy for us to...
The issue that the planning board was dealing with was, should it be addressed through a zoning perspective?
Right.
The question now is, should the issue be addressed as a public nuisance? If it's going to be addressed as a public nuisance, the question would be, do you do that through the public nuisance that pertains to dog noise that exceeds 10 minutes? Or do you, how would you address it? Couple of the things that are important is that, is the existing fine structure that is statutorily allowed appropriate in today's day and age to be a meaningful fine? Or should the town, if they were going to amend their ordinance to include the roosters as a noise disturbance, should there be something looked at in terms of getting statutory authority to increase those fines? Those are the issues that would be discussed at an informational session. I want to make it clear that the only reason we would notify farmers isn't to try to bring out opposition to the regulation, but rather because we would need to provide that notification based on existing statute.
I looked at the requirements for notification to farmers, and it looks to me there are six different specific cases where they're required to be notified. And I don't see any of those as far as a noise ordinance regarding animals. There's noise about machinery, hours of operation, water issues, changes in taxes, but there's nothing in there that I could see about notification of noise, animal noises.
And that's why my memo to the council was couched the way it was, that out of abundance of caution, because you're talking about noise, even though it's not machinery noise, it's animal noise. So it's a lot easier to just upfront, let people know, I think Mr. Traeger just said that a little while ago, let people know, express their opinion, than have to be in a court after the council has already acted and try to defend. It's just easier and better to be transparent. That's all.
So Mike has suggested five different options, which are, one of them, the first one is simply adding a few words to the current noise, dog ordinance, which is something which we talked about a month ago. And then some examples from other towns. But I feel that probably us, and probably the cats also, feel that any one of these would be, would give us some remedy to stop this noise. It's worse than ever. I think Renee, maybe you can say something, she was up 3:30 the other morning, listening to these things. It's, you know, extremely...
Is there more than one now?
Yes, there's more than one.
Last time you were here, you said there was only one.
Well, there were...
We do believe there are two. One is loud, the other has, is just, we think, perhaps juvenile, just kind of developing its...
These things live for 15 years. You know, we've been dealing with this problem for seven or eight years now. It's a long thing, you know, every single day.
And you have not gotten any more response from the individual property owner?
No, they're unwilling to do anything about...
I know longer call, to be honest. There's nothing to be gained there, except frustration.
Well, I hear two town council members that say they would like to move forward with a public informational meeting, notice to farmers. Does anybody else want to weigh in? Jim or Paul?
I think that's a good idea, give us a little bit more information, then move from there.
Little bit more information, so you're aye? Jim?
I want this to be specific, but roosters, animal, I can't go there. I'd never go there. That's so broad as to be ridiculous. I think it'd be a lot more specific. But you're right, the planning, I mean, some of the folks that came out, they just weren't farmers. There were neighbors who I wouldn't believe, and other neighbors who feel like the Perrys do. But can't use the word animal. Got to be specific with rooster. Dog and rooster, rooster.
I just want to say, I mean, it wasn't on the agenda for tonight, so I'm not in any position to say I want anything. I want to read what the planning board did in 2011. I want to consider that, and then maybe after that. But if you've got three votes to put it on the agenda for a public hearing, go ahead. But I'm not, I didn't come here tonight even thinking this was on. You know, I read Mike's memo from last week, but I did not anticipate making any decisions based on this right now. And I think people should be afforded the right to be heard on this. I mean, I'm not big on regulating animals, so I'll be right up front with you.
It's noise. I mean, people can still have roosters, they can just, there are many remedies. Last month...
Well, rooster, the nature of a rooster is, if it makes noise, I mean...
No, when you asked last week, last month, if there's things, and there's a large number of things people can do to quiet the things down and not annoy their neighbors.
How do you quiet, put it in a duck room, you said, and lock it up all day? I mean, I don't know about that.
It could be a noise-proof enclosure. It could be, there's, certain roosters need to stand up tall and to crow. A lot of people put a shelf in to prevent them from rearing up and crowing. This keeps them quiet. There are other areas, you can do things like, you know, like a bark-stopping collar, which makes a beep and will dissuade them from crowing. Just teach them not to crow because of a noise, a beeping-type noise, which wouldn't be harmful, but it would be better for people like us. There are other things. Bring them inside in the garage. There's a lot of things that people can do. Since you asked that specifically last month...
No, I'm glad you're saying this, because I know nothing about roosters, nothing. I mean, I hear them, but...
A few minutes' research, it seemed to me that there were quite a few things that people could do, which is a lot better than waking us up at 3:00, 4:00 every morning. It's every single morning. And then it crows all day long, many, many times. I mean, we took some notes around the Fourth of July weekend. It's just dozens and dozens of times a day, and it's just, we're sick of it, you know? We're just asking for something to reckon to.
There's no recourse at all right now for anybody if there's any noise, not just animal noise, noise in general, that I'm aware of, so...
Jim, I think that you mentioned other animals. Now, I think that, you know, there's peacocks, there's guinea hens, there's geese, there are a lot of types of fowl which could potentially cause the same kind of problem. So I think that the, limiting just to roosters may be, you know, an issue. Would someone get a flock of guinea hens or peacocks, which would then do the same kind of thing? So I think the word animal, where a person could call and complain, and an animal control person would then determine that there is an issue, to us, that would make more sense, you know?
Yeah, I can't support that. I can tell you that right now. A lot of my neighbors have guinea hens just to help them with the tick population. That's not the problem. It's coyotes dinner. I just can't agree with you at all on that, and I won't. It's roosters. And the issue I've always been called on are roosters, not guinea hens, not the duck, not the geese, it's the rooster.
Okay.
So please don't go there, because I can't help you there.
Well, a public hearing would be welcome, to hear all sides, and then perhaps finally get some action and some relief for those of us who are living with this.
Now, because it's not on the agenda, and we did vote to have it on the agenda, I don't think that there can be a vote, but we can...
There can't be a motion, however. What you can do is you can direct staff, presumably Dale, to start looking at some dates that can be brought back to you at the next meeting. And then you can actually vote on establishing the date of the meeting.
Right. I would like a public informational meeting so that we can gather more information. I mean, today I'm hearing that the lifespan of a rooster is 15 years. I mean, that's news to me. I didn't know that. Some of those other things that you had recommended, I was not aware of, so...
Take a seat.
Is there information that Steve just passed on to Mike?
We're just, when we set the date for the hearing, we just have to make sure within the timeframe of the notice to the farmers, that's all. But we'll look at that, and the dates we propose or that we discuss at the next meeting, we'll make sure they comply.
All right. Is there anyone, I know we can't take a vote, that would be objectionable, you know, objection to the public information meeting?
I am. I'm an objection. I feel I came here tonight, it's not on the agenda, I'm not in a position to vote on this. I want to see what the planning board said, you know?
That's fine. Take your time.
I want to take some time.
I would rather you did take all of the time you need, because you need to make a fully informed vote should we get to a vote. So please do. And I, I think that's reasonable. I'm anxious personally, but I can wait, and I would rather that you know all that you need to know.
Thank you.
So would we, what would be the plan, just so we're not maybe that familiar with the, how this would go?
I think when you come back to your August 13th meeting, you'll have a discussion about setting a date.
Could you please put it on the agenda for August 13th, and we'll have a full-blown discussion and take a formal vote whether to go with a public information meeting, notice to farmers, and we'll cover all our bases.
Great.
Sounds good.
Thank you for listening to us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Other comments from interested citizens?
I have a few dates that I just want to mention tonight. I have been mentioning for the past couple of town council meetings that the Governor's Commission on Disabilities, it's actually tomorrow at the Peacedale Library from 4:00 to 6:00. And this is a time to bring any concerns from people with disabilities in our community or neighboring communities forward to the Governor's Commission on Disabilities. So it's tomorrow, 4:00 to 6:00 at the Peacedale Library. And I didn't know if there was any further information that any of the town council members had. We got, saved the date for August 7th, the 80th year celebration for Theater by the Sea. Didn't know if there was any more information on that. And I just want to congratulate Downtown Merchants Association for a wonderful ladies' night on Main Street, one of the most active days that I've ever seen with ladies' night this year. So nice job. Any other comments from the public or back to the table?
Seeing none, town managers report.
In the July 18th packet, the council received a memo... In the July 18th packet, the council received a memorandum from Terry Murphy, which was requested at the last council meeting for a review on the feasibility of establishing some type of business relationship with food trucks during both the 2013 season and 2014. Terry's provided a memorandum indicating that there are but four events during the month of August, three at the Village Green for concerts and one at Marina Park for a movie night, and indicated that the Recreation Commission is prepared to invite food trucks, a maximum of three to each of those four events, at the suggestion of the council. Obviously, no votes were taken by the council, but this would provide us with an opportunity to see what type of interest the trucks would generate and how they would react with either the concerts or the movie night. We will be in contact with local vendors that operate food trucks and determine their availability for those Sunday and Friday events. We will provide the council with additional information, and there will be public advertising that will be put forward to identify this additional element for those four events. Council has any comments on that? It may be appropriate to give us further direction at this point. If I've summed up where we are with it, then we can move on.
Carol?
I want to thank Terry for the report, very good, and Andy and Steve. And I do, I think this is a good start. We'll start with these four events, Sunday, August 4th, Sunday, August 11th, both at Village Green, Friday, August 16th, and Sunday, August, Friday, August 16th at Marina Park, and Sunday, August 18th at Village Green. I think that would be a good start to see how this works out. And the other thing I'd like to ask you, Mike, the town ordinance, it says here, 9-61 restricts vendors from selling within town parks. Is there, how does Narragansett get around that? Obviously, their ordinance doesn't restrict...
That restriction's in there just for control purposes, so that you don't have, you know...
That's for peddlers.
Yeah, hawkies and peddlers, right?
Oh, peddlers. So I mean, if, I mean, right now, we're saying we can only do this in conjunction with a recreational event. But in the future, if we want to just have a truck night for, say, next year, then we need to...
If it's on the town property, you could do that. The ordinance here deals with a Dell's truck that is parking throughout the community that would go onto the town beach or onto the playgrounds.
Right. Without permission?
Yeah, they're prevented from doing that.
Okay.
If there's specific permission provided. Remember that all of our parks are under the care and control of the Recreation Commission as far as use and activity. So Recreation Commission sets the agenda, which is based on the budget that you provide them, and these services can be provided in conjunction with the activities that are already put there.
Right.
We would still need to keep 9-61 in place as a means of preventing other vehicles from entering town parks or the town beach.
Right.
Particularly where we've got concession contracts in place.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to know what the restriction was, because it was kind of vague, but that's great. Well, I think this is a good start, and truck night has been quite popular in the Providence Journal lately. I think today, as a matter of fact.
Again, let me reiterate, we'll be looking at the local truck population in terms of the recruitment, and we would limit it to no more than three for any of those events. And we'll try to have a shared, a sharing of that with each of those vehicles.
That's a great idea. No, I think we should keep it local. I think that's the best bet. Buy local, sell local, do business with locals. We're all about that. So...
You don't want four trucks selling lobster rolls?
No.
Yeah, whatever, three trucks. You want to have a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of variety.
Right.
Exactly.
With that, I yield to the solicitor.
So I just want to clarify that you'll reach out to the food trucks and see if they'll be available on these four dates. And if there is even availability for one or two of them, we're still going to proceed forward.
That's correct. Okay.
And we were talking about the possibility of next Monday, if that works out with the concert series. If that can be, it may be too soon, but if Terry wanted to look into that, I don't know. That'd be great, too.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah.
Thank you. So Town Managers Report, all set. Town Solicitors Report.
So you saw my memo on the issue we just discussed on the food trucks, and we discussed my memo on the roosters. So unless there are any other questions, I'm all set.
Any questions for Michael? All set, which brings us to appointments.
Okay, I am, we have one appointment to the Board of Trustees of the South Kingstown Library. I make a motion that we appoint Mary C. McDonald for a term of three years. Oh, wait, there's one vacancy. That term would expire July of 2015.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jim?
I'd like to amend that motion, and I'd like to nominate Betty J. Cotter to that position on the Library Board of Trustees.
I think you can have up to two motions.
Actually, since this is appointments, every council member has the right to nominate someone. You could have as many names as you want. So if you have two, and what you would do is you would vote on the order that they were nominated.
So did you want to truly amend Carol's motion? Or make another motion, Jim?
Michael, what's the preferred?
You want to make another motion to appoint Betty, right?
It's a nomination.
Well, nominate, nominate Betty.
Do the motion then to nominate Betty J. Cotter for the open position on the Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, we have two motions on the table, and I believe Robert's rules allows us to have three. So we will vote on the first one, and if the first one prevails, do we vote on the second one? No. Does everybody understand the process?
So I guess that's why I wanted to know if I can amend that, because that would have been voted on first. Amending the first motion, rather than now going in this order, first then second. I thought, I thought the amended motion always took precedent.
Okay. So is there a second to Jim's motion to amend Carol's motion? That would be the next question, then. Is there a second? Because I understand now, you want to put Betty's name first.
Right.
So you're, you're looking to, so you would need a second now.
Yep. But I'm amending Carol's motion.
Right. But you would need a second, though, to your motion to amend.
Correct, 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 correct.
I would just like to say for the record that I think Betty Cotter is an excellent candidate for this position. And we, I know myself and others on this town council have labored this position and given it a lot of thought over who we would appoint. It's my understanding that Ella did contact Betty, and I believe she'd be interested in the Economic Development Committee, which we could sorely use her on.
She said that she would think about it, and I'm going to get back to her, you know, after this meeting tonight. But she's seriously going to think about that.
And the other thing I'd like to add is that also, the next available opening on the library board, if she's interested, it's hers. That would be my feeling.
It's very difficult, because you have very credible and very good people that are vying for this position. And it's an unpaid position, and it's a volunteer basis. And you've got two people that are just phenomenal, and the fact that they want to help out and work to help the town means an awful lot. And the toughest thing is, we have to incorporate tonight is to make a decision. Because how do you choose between two fully qualified people? And if, if one of them is interested in serving on another committee and knowing that there is going to be an opening down the road, then that's a great thing. But you don't want to turn people away, but you want to welcome the opportunity. But unfortunately, the state says we can only have one person.
Well, maybe in that case, then, I should, I think we had three excellent candidates. Jeff Mead also is a very strong candidate for the Library Board of Trustees. Maybe what I should do is call them both and apologize for keeping them and stringing them along for so long when there seemed to be one choice and one choice only for this position. So that bothers me more than anything else.
Well, no matter how you look at it, Jim, there's one choice. Whether it be any one of the three of them, it would be one choice. They all, all three can't have the position. I mean...
Well, that's the first nine inning game I've ever been involved with, where one had a three to two lead and has now, now lost that position.
Dale, do you have the application date for Jeff Mead? Just before we take the vote, I want to make sure that all questions are answered at this table.
I don't have his application. I don't have his, is it on?
8/27/2012, and interviewed on 9/10/2012.
Thank you.
Okay, so his application is still active because it's one year. I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
I'd like to also ask him if he'd be interested in any other boards or committees. Mead maybe would be. Because we certainly have some vacancies.
He applied for it. There's a, on the notes that we got with vacancies, he did apply for something.
Did he?
Yes.
Just trying to find his application.
He applied for something else?
Yep. Hold on, let's go to the openings.
I don't know. What did he apply for, Meg? Do you know?
Nope, I'm looking at it right now, unless I was misunderstood, but I...
Oh, yes, he did. Zoning Board. There's no vacancies. He applied for zoning Board.
He did. He applied for something else. I saw that when I was reading over my packet.
You're right.
Okay. Well, so there was another interest, and there's nothing left.
Let's go.
Okay. All right. So there was not, I just want to go back to Mike. There was no second for the motion, so I'm going to ask for a vote on the original, Carol's original motion. We've had a motion and a second, and we've had further discussion. So, ready to vote? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstention. So motion carries, 4-1-0.
Meg didn't vote. Did you vote?
I didn't know whether I should abstain or not because of personal relationship. So I, I don't know how that works. Maybe I could defer to you.
As long as it's not a sibling or a marital issue or cousin, so it's not that issue. The only other reason you'd abstain, I mean, well, abstain, I'm sorry. I'm talking about recusing. You can abstain for any reason.
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Glad you picked up on that, Carol, because I didn't know that you didn't vote. And I don't really want to ask for roll call votes every single time we vote, so please bring it to my attention. I believe we also have one more appointment with John Kimpton.
On what?
On the last page. Reappointment for John Kimpton.
I move that we reappoint John Kimpton to the Partnership for Prevention. It's a three-year term. His term expired in June 2012. That would take him to June 2015.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Which brings us to New Business D. This is a resolution authorizing the tax assessor to abate taxes in the total amount of $16,739.24, as shown on Tax Abatement Request Number 493. Steve?
As noted, seven of the, seven are about $7,500 worth pertaining to late entries into the elderly tax abatement program. The remainder are principally associated with values from DMV pricing errors for the total. There's approximately 25 units that are noted here in addition to the seven with the elderly program. We recommend the council approve as presented.
Thank you.
I move approval of New Business Item D.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Business Item E is a resolution rejecting all bids for actuarial consulting services received and recorded on April 25, 2013, based on the availability of qualified actuarial firms under the State Master Price Agreement as of June 25, 2013, and is further described in a memorandum from the Finance Director to the Town Manager dated July 10, 2013, and entitled "Gatsby: 43 and 45 Actuarial Consulting Services Recommendation: Rejection of Bids Reference and Award of Contracts Under State Master Price Agreement."
As noted in Trish Sunderland, the Finance Director's memorandum of July 10, we had initially gone out on April 4 and solicited proposals. The responses, six responses were provided in late April. In reviewing those, we also determined that there was a master price agreement that had been let by the state all the way into June. When we looked at the master price agreement, the cost per hour presented by one of the qualified consultants was less than what had been submitted in the bidding proposal, the solicitation of proposals made by the town. As such, we contacted that vendor and determined that we could use the billing rates as presented in the MPA, yet continue to cap the hours based on the presentation within the bid award. Therefore, we've got two items on tonight's agenda. First item, which is under discussion and on the table at this point, is the rejection of the bids that were solicited on April 4 and opened on April 25. And the next item, F, would be to award those same services through the MPA contract from the state. And that would be for a three-year contract. If I can just continue, I'll speak to the item F as well. Item F indicates that we would award a three-year contract with Howard E. Nyhurt Company, and they would provide the actuarial consulting services on the hourly rates provided within the MPA contract. In 2014 year, it would be a fee of $7,125. In year 15, $2,000. With a year three, $7,125. We would also use services during the second year, which are outlined in the optional services, which would be a sensitivity analysis that would look at alternative assumptions that could be used in reviewing the OPEB values. And in the third year, we would go with a full review of the assessment value for the OPEB at the $7,125. I've also recommended a small contingency, so the total contract not to exceed over the three years at $20,000. So I'd ask the council in item E to reject as presented April 25, and F to award based on the memorandum of July 10 that I've just outlined.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to box E and F together, please?
I move that we approve New Business Item E and F.
Could I ask to have those as two separate motions?
Two separate, okay. I move that we approve item, New Business Item E in rejecting all bids.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I move that we approve New Business Item F in authorizing an award of contract to Howard E. Nyhurt Company.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. New Business Item H is a resolution authorizing an amendment to an award of contract originally granted on October 9, 2012 to Edward Rouse Architects, 115 Cedar Street, Providence, Rhode Island, for architectural and engineering services for the emergency medical services. South Station renovation project from an amount not to exceed $28,000 to an amount not to exceed $31,700, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of EMS to the Town Manager... to the Town Manager dated July 17, 2013, and entitled "Request for Contract Amendment: Architectural Services for Renovation to EMS South Station."
In October of last year, the council awarded a contract not to exceed $28,000 for the architectural services. One of the things that we found, and we discussed, in fact, with the council, I think in January, was the fact that the generator of that building would also need to be removed and a new generator installed. The original generator goes back to the initial building construction, probably in the late 1960s. That was not included in the initial scope of services. Since that point, the architect of record has provided additional work. The negotiated price for providing that additional work that would deal with both the waterline relocation and what the spec requirements would be for a new generator, and the upgrade in the electrical panels within that building are approximately $3,700. We'd ask the council to approve that as a contract amendment, increasing the $28,000 up to, up by the $3,700 to a total amount not to exceed of $31,700.
Thank you.
I move approval of New Business Item H.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Before we go into closed executive session, is there anything any council would like to bring up for the good of the order?
I think Jim should have a seatbelt in his chair.
I will call him as soon as we get into closed executive session to find out if he will be attending. Otherwise, we have a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5- excuse me, A1 to discuss matters pertaining to personnel, reasons Steve Alfred, and he has been notified. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Dale?
Yes. Council President Whaley.
Aye.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Aye.
Councilman Donnelly.
Aye.
Councilwoman Haley.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill left at 9:10. The vote to adjourn to closed executive session passes 4 to 1. I mean, for, for all those present, for the four present. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now in closed executive session.